Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the April Carmel Clay School Board Meeting. We have a number of special recognitions and awards to deliver and hand out this evening. So without further ado, we'll do roll call.
Madam President, all board members are present. We have a call.
Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence in honor of the Boston Marathon tragedy victims. This is the -- Dr. Dudley's going to lead us in the pledge.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And moving right along, we will begin with special presentations with Dr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, distinguished colleagues, fellow citizens, and honored students. We have a large number of awards, as Mrs. Vandenberg indicated, so we will begin right away with state champions. And state champions in the Carmel Clay schools often include great thinkers. And it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Coach Justin Kay and Mrs. Kim Barrett, principal at Smokey Roll Elementary, who will introduce and praise our state champions in Math Bowl.
I have very little to say. We're just so proud of these kids, and I know somebody owns this phrase, but it is a three-peat.
Yeah, I think that's Pat Riley. I could not be prouder of this group of individuals. This is the third straight year that we have had a perfect score of 28. Some of the members of this team have not missed a question in two years, and there were a few. We haven't missed a question since the seventh question of the 2010 Math Bowl.
Could you be more specific?
No, I can't. That's not as specific as I can get. So I am very proud of them. They came to practice two mornings every week, rain, snow, sleet, ice, hail, shine, and they did a marvelous job, and I could not be prouder. So no more talking. I'll just call their names and have my little assistant here hand them things. Can you do that? Okay. All right. Aiden Benedetto. I think he's at swim practice. I don't think his mom let him come, so Mr. Plum, you're probably pretty happy about that tonight. John Hong. Brian Liu. Cameron Malavi. Justin Pallata. William Plum. Drew Sanchez. Felicia Sanders. Andrew Shawwig. Griffin Seaver. Jeffrey Tan. Harry Wong. And last but not least, Nathan Zhang. Thank you very much.
And Math Bowl state champions, your principal will lead you across and your coach will follow. We next are here to celebrate several of our students from Carmel High School. Awards for our Carmel Clay students come in many different disciplinary areas, and this set of awards is in art. So it's my pleasure to introduce from Carmel High School Ms. Jen Bupp and Mr. John Kane, who will present these awards.
During the month of March, the National Art Education Association of Indiana sponsors Youth Art Month. And that's an opportunity for elementary students through high school students to compete statewide in a competition held at the Indiana State House. This year, I'll let Mr. Kane explain.
Well, this year, we found out about the competition just two weeks before the due date, and I asked Alex if he thought he could come up with an award-winning drawing in that time period, and he took on the challenge. This happens to be one of Alex's pieces, too, and it's beautifully rendered, and I knew that he would be able to do really well. I had confidence in him. So he took on the challenge, and it was a nervous thrill as we stood in the rotunda in the Capitol Building as the awards were announced. And when all but the best of show had been announced, and Alex's name had not yet been called, I had a pretty good idea of who had won. With such an outstanding drawing, it was no surprise when they announced the winner, Alex Mykev. And we were all so proud of him. His mom was standing there, she was so proud, and I was, too, and it was a great moment. This is the drawing that Alex created. And Alex wanted to tell us a little bit about the background behind this piece. Self-portrait.
Hello, everybody. I'm Alex. I'm the artist for this piece. Like Mr. Kane said, I had about two weeks to come up with this, and initially, we were going to enter a previous self-portrait I had done, but it was at the -- it was at another location, First Classics, where it couldn't be moved, so I had to come up with another piece. Mr. Kane suggested that I did another self-portrait because my last one was pretty strong. So I went ahead and tried to expand on my idea. The last one, I drew myself coming out of a piece of paper, and my eyes poked through along with part of my face, and it captured -- it captured the viewer with eye contact. And I thought, okay, so how can I push my next self-portrait even farther? And so part of the quality of award-winning pieces is that not only they're technically strong, but they also have a message behind it and a personal vision. And so I figured, you know, as an artist, I'm still learning and growing and creating myself and all the things that you have to do to become an artist. You know, you develop your ideas and whatnot. So by, you know, I took it more literally, and I drew myself, drawing myself to life, and I researched the anatomy of the arm. I went into detail, you know, figure out all the tendons and muscles, and so -- and then I fused a different -- a few different pictures together and came up with the final product and put it on the paper. So -- and then it happened to win Best in Show, so it was a good experience.
So as state champion in Youth Arts Month, Alex won a trip to New York City, and he'll be going there with his mother and with Mr. Kane, and they will be a part of a presentation and dinner, and they'll get to tour art museums while they're there, the Statue of Liberty, and see a Broadway show. So it was well worth his efforts.
We have another presentation, too. This one is for the Scholastic Art Show. The Scholastic Art Competition was begun 90 years ago with the purpose of rewarding outstanding student artists with the same sort of recognition given to accomplished student athletes and scholars. Scholastic artwork represents a significant standard of excellence, and when students receive recognition for their talent, some begin to see themselves as true artists and maybe for the very first time. Past winners include Andy Warhol, Sylvia Plath, Truman Capote, Richard Avedon, Robert Redford, and Joyce Carol Oates. This year, 40 Carmel High School artists received regional awards of honorable mention, Silver Key and Gold Key Awards in the annual Scholastic Art and Writing Competition of Central Indiana. From over 2,150 entries, these students were recognized for their artistic creativity, technique, and personal vision. They received their awards at Clues Hall during a ceremony on March 17th.
So Gold Key Award-winning artwork was then juried from 80,000 entries across the nation. Our national award-winning students are Sarah Brunz, who received a national silver medal art award. Nicole Yun, who was nominated the American Visions Art Winner. This is the Best in Show regionally, and it is also exhibited nationally, and she's in Korea, so she's not here tonight. She was also a national gold art medal winner. And then Greg Dugdale, he was the national gold key art portfolio winner and one of the eight national gold portfolio winners selected from 10,000 entries nationwide. He also received a $10,000 art scholarship. These students' work will be exhibited among only 300 works of art in New York City before becoming part of a national touring exhibition of Scholastic artwork. They will get to take a bow onstage at Carnegie Hall as they receive their awards on May 31st, and in their honor, the Empire State Building will be lit up in gold.
I have one more thing to say. I'm quite finished, but that is a big deal. And on Friday, May 31st, two giant screens in Times Square will display a 30-second Scholastic Art and Writing Awards feature. And this will run every two minutes throughout the entire day. So they're making a big deal out of it because it is a huge honor, and it's an important day for these students. And for the first time ever, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards will be webcast. The national awards ceremony live from Carnegie Hall can be seen on that webcast on May 31st at 6:00 PM. We're so proud of these students. Greg wanted to tell you just for a bit about the theme that he works with in his portfolio of work. So Greg, you want to step over here to the microphone? Give us a short description.
Okay, so my theme is recycled. So what I do is I search for treasures in dumpsters or my house or goodwill and give a second chance to things that have been thrown out and create art with it in a new way. That's my theme.
State and national champions abound this evening. It's my pleasure next to introduce Mr. Jim Enskeep, athletic director at Carmel High School, who has a very unique and positive group of individuals to introduce with their state championship.
Thank you, Dr. Swenson and members of the board. It's an honor to be here this evening, and thank you for having all these wonderful students throughout our district and recognizing their terrific feats. Lots of groups tonight, including WHJE, as I'm a former WHJE staffer and always very proud of all the work that they do. But tonight, my role is to recognize our boys' basketball team, who won their second straight state championship last month at Bankers Life Fieldhouse. It is a great, great group of young men who have represented the city of Carmel very well in so many different ways, and I could go on and on, but very proud of the way they represent us, and obviously, their talents playing basketball as well. So before I introduce them to come up, these are just senior members of the team and some of the coaches that are here this evening. One of the neat things about the tournament trail is after each level of the tournament, you get to cut down the net after winning, the sectional, regional, semi-state, or state. And one of the real thrills, I think, is to see the way these young men connect with children in our community by cutting off smaller bits of the net for themselves so that they can share it with other kids who cheered them on at the games. And that's just a small part of the way they give back to our community. So they didn't know I was going to say that. So I'm going to have each of them come forward and tell you their name and where they're going to be going next year. Representing our senior class tonight is Michael Volovic, James Volovic, Tyler Kwazniewski, and James Crowley. Grant Goodman is competing in a track meet tonight for Carmel High School and could not make it. Also, to recognize as well, members of our coaching staff, head coach Scott Hetty, and three of his assistant coaches who could be with us tonight, Derek Moser, Francis Ramirez, and John Foss as well. So Michael, you're going to say your name, where you're going to school, and what your future plans are.
I'm Michael Volovic, and I'll be going to Butler next year to study business.
I am James Volovic, and I'm going to IU next year to study biology.
I'm Tyler Kwazniewski, and I'm going to IU next year to study business.
I am James Crowley, and I'm going to Marion next year to study business.
WHJE is the high school radio station at Carmel High School, and while many people may not know this, there is a state radio high school competition in the state of Indiana. It gives me great pleasure to turn to the director, the chief, the man with the microphone, Mr. Brian Spillbeller, who leads our students and who will announce a very important and special state championship. Mr. Spillbeller.
I'd like to start off. Our motto each day is to strive to be an Enskeep. There's a long legacy of Enskeeps at WHJE, and Mr. Jim Enskeep being one of them. But I would like to thank Dr. Swenson. I'd like to thank all the members of the board. I'd especially like to thank the administration at Carmel High School, Mr. John Williams, who's here, Doug Bird especially, and then our department chair, Bonnie Gruber. Without the support of the entire district and of our local administration, none of the things that we do at this station would be possible. In May -- or, excuse me, in March, we had the annual IASB Association Conference and Contest. It's a contest that brings in about 29 Indiana high schools. This year, we had a record-breaking 393 entries, and there are 11 radio categories, some of which you send in ahead of time that are judged, others that we have finalists, and then we do live finals at the University of Indianapolis studios. This year, WHJE, in the 11 categories, had four first-place winners, seven second-place winners, and two third-place winners. And in my seven years here, we've never had this many individuals receive awards. This year, we had 10 different students receive awards at this contest, and that's the most that I've heard of at the contest in general. This is the third time in six years that the station has won this honor, and we are very, very proud of the hard-working students. And what I think is most interesting is the diversity of these students. Some of these students are very involved in journalism and news reporting, others are more involved in sports, some involved in music and DJing. And so what's really great about my job is being able to have a strong diversity of students that have many different interests but all collaborate on the same overall program and overall goal. So there are six students here that I'd like to recognize. First of all, is the first-place winner in spot production and second-place winner in live news anchor, and that is John Perkins. Next, I'd like to honor the first-place winner in live news anchor. She's tiny but a big voice, Ann Broach. Next, he won second place in football play-by-play and second place in interviewing, and that was Kyle Hunter. The second-place winner in live on-air talent and the third-place winner in radio in-depth was Corey Dalegracius. The second-place winner in live on-air talent, this is Corey's show partner, The Average Joe Show is their show name, and this is Cam Roudabush. And finally, a rising star in the music world himself, the third-place live on-air talent, he is known as The Radiohead, and that is Drew Osherman. Again, we appreciate the support, and tune in, 91.3 on your FM dial. Thank you.
As we have seen, none of these awards and none of this excellence would be quite as important or quite as possible were it not for outstanding educators. We've met some of them already, but we have two very important and special awards for two specific educators that will round out our spotlight this evening. It's next my pleasure to turn to the former principal of Town Meadow Elementary School and the current director of Human Resources, Mr. Ryan Newman, to make this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Swenson and members of the board. I'm filling in this evening for Tim Ferriss, who's the principal at Town Meadow, who's unable to make it this evening. And when he asked if I would present this award on his behalf, I agreed very quickly because there are a number of exceptional colleagues at Town Meadow that I was able to work with, and the one that's chosen tonight for this award is very deserving. This is the Arts Council of Indianapolis Creative Renewal Arts Fellowship, and this is an award that was chosen based on 10 submitted pieces of artwork that this teacher created. He was awarded a $10,000 grant to continue his study in the area of art. He'll be traveling to Greece during the summer of 2014 to study archaeological sites, museums, and the culture. Mr. Ferriss wanted me to relate that the Town Meadow staff is very proud of this person's accomplishments and his commitment to our students, and they look forward to seeing our students, his students, benefit from this trip. And I can tell you personally, as someone with very little artistic ability, when I was the principal at Town Meadow, Mr. Lamy, Phil Lamy, actually made me feel like I could make art, and that is an accomplishment, my friends.
And finally, we turn to a very special award winner and a very special principal. Mr. John Williams will come forth to announce this important award.
Thank you, and board, Amy, Roger, and Ryan. I don't know if I've told you this, but I'm so proud to be the principal of Carmel High School and really appreciate the opportunity. I think it's great that you get a chance often to see our kids, remarkably talented they are and accomplished. I also think it's important every time we do that, that the adults in their life, the teachers, the staff members, coaches, are also here with them because we know what kind of kids we have at Carmel High School, how fortunate we are to have outstanding, truly outstanding kids who are dedicated to excellence. But I would tell you, and you've heard me say this before, it's about leadership, and the leadership that our teachers, our coaches, our staff members provide for those kids, I'm absolutely convinced makes a difference in what they accomplish. So we honor our kids, but we also recognize and appreciate the work of our teachers. Speaking of teachers, it is my pleasure to inform you that one of our teachers, one of our math teachers, Jan Michner, a teacher at Carmel High School, has been selected as one of the recipients of the Indiana University Armstrong Teacher/Educator Award for the 2013-14 school year. Jan, would you join me up here? This prestigious award was inaugurated in 1997 to honor exemplary teachers throughout Indiana interested in working with teacher, education, students, faculty, and staff at Indiana University Bloomington. Winners of the Armstrong Teacher/Education Award will become actively involved in the life of the teacher/education program at IU Bloomington for the next school year. All seven, only seven, but all seven of the teachers, I think, this is something else I'm very proud of, all seven of these teachers selected this year were Indiana public school teachers. So to public schools and to Jan Michner, congratulations.
Before we get to public participation, we will take a couple moments recess to allow students to go home and study, or families to go home and do some of their evening activities. We'll resume in about two minutes. If you wanted to get some photo shots, by all means, do that as well. all means do that as well. Now that our families and students are on their way home, I will proceed to public participation. I'd like to remind those speaking this evening to please state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes to share your thoughts with the board. The colored lights at the podium will serve as a visual reminder. The yellow will illuminate when you have 30 seconds left. The red will signify your two minutes are ended. A chime will remind you to wrap up your thoughts and move along. So with that, we'll begin with Lisa Washburn, please.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Washburn. I live at 13699 Royal Saddle Drive, and we have several parents here tonight in support of an initiative to increase the recess time allotment for Carmel Clay Elementary Schools. In February, our group launched an informative website, rethinkingrecess.org. We've also started an online petition. Our goal in launching the petition was to gauge parental interest in this topic, and we hope that its results are helpful to the school board as they consider whether this topic should become a priority. To date, we have gathered 201 signatures on the petition. I'm confident that this number would dramatically increase if the petition were made available to every CCS parent. Here are a few of the many comments left by those who signed. Kevin Kosch, on February 1st, "Our children are overstructured. There is a need for more spontaneous activities." Nicole Dietrich, February 16th, "As a K-12 educator, I find this initiative critical for the well-being of students." Bridget Hill, February 28th, "As a pediatric occupational therapist, I see this as a concern for typically developing children and children with special needs alike. Children learn so much better when they can move." Chelsea Flint, March 5th, "My son will be in kindergarten this fall, and I feel strongly that he should have more recess time, especially since kindergarten is a full day." Lauren Melby, April 3rd, "It seems that the lack of free play and exercise would stifle creativity and make it more difficult for children to focus in the classroom. A better balance of physical activity and curriculum should be a win-win for both teachers and students." Janine and Andrew Lorette, April 5th, "Dear Carmel Clay School Board, staying physically active is extremely important for the overall health of our youth, especially given the obesity rates of children in the U.S. We support the petition with request to lengthen the recess time at schools. Kind regards, Janine and Andrew Lorette." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Solazo.
Good evening. I'm Mike Solazo. I live at 14151 Pepin Place, Carmel. My son Andrew goes, is in first grade and is at Smoky Row Elementary, and I would, am happy to report, he is in great hands with Mrs. Barrett. I am also here to talk about extending recess. My concern is that the allotted time for children to play for 15 minutes on the playground, which includes putting on your hat and coat, lining up, to go in and go out, I don't know is enough time. And for me to come over and tell you I'm an expert on this subject, I am not, okay? I believe that recess, there's a lot of benefits to recess. I look back through my own history, playing baseball, playing kickball. Some of you are old enough to know about trading baseball cards. I don't know that we're teaching our children the interactive skills, by and large, as a whole, with the internet and texting and so on and so forth. One-to-one communication on a playground, I think, is invaluable. And to ask our children to unwind, really, for 10 minutes, I don't know it is enough time. There is, I do have some handouts for you that I will, I will give you. The National Association of Sports Physical Education recommends 20 minutes of recess. The Indiana Department of Health recommends 30 minutes. Does that beat for me? The Academy of American Pediatrics, 60 minutes. My concern is, is that, these are little people. They've got so much energy. Let them run. Let them have fun. Let them get back in the classroom and learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alana Holt.
I'm Alana Holt. I'm at 3726 West 98th Street, and I'm really pleased to come and talk today. Actually grew up, I went through the Carmel School System, went to Carmel Elementary, Carmel Middle School, graduated Carmel High School. It was fantastic experience. I loved it. In fact, I met my husband Dot West and convinced him to move across the country just so we can raise our kids here, because I knew that Carmel Schools, there's no comparison, and I knew what kind of education my children received. But when it came to my attention that next year, when my son starts kindergarten, he'd only have 15 minutes of recess, it kind of broke my heart. It really surprised me. You know, I'm really glad that he'll have an academically rigorous experience, but I want him to also to physically develop and socially develop, you know, just as we heard about. His little body's still developing. He just needs to run. He's got little legs. And I'm sure as you take an opportunity to read through the scholarly articles, it'll just reinforce what you already know, you know, as you hear expert after expert explain, that 15 minutes is not enough time for little kids as they run around. They really need a few more minutes than that. And I know that you have a lot to worry about, you know, a new superintendent coming up, you've got to worry about facilities, you've got to worry about teachers and their accommodations, and so, you know, a few minutes of recess seems like a small matter. But it's not a small matter to us as parents, and to my five-year-old little boy James, it's not a small matter to him, or the thousands of other elementary school children in our district. And as a person with a degree in applied mathematics, I understand that numbers really, really help tell a story. I mean, having Carmel is number one in so many things, and being so proud of all these kids that came up here, just showing their excellence and shining examples. Numbers are a very important thing, but I just hope that we don't let the idea of a ranking get in the way of measuring what true success is, and helping our children to be happy and successful in their lives. And I really think that a few more minutes of recess will make a huge difference in that category. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicole Dietrich.
Dear members of the board and administration, thank you for your time and commitment to Carmel Schools community. I recognize the importance of your work, and I thank you for your dedication to the students of Carmel. My name is Nicole Dietrich, and I live at 14252 Autumn Woods Drive in Saddle Creek. I moved here three years ago from Fisher's, excited to place our only child into this wonderful school system. So far, I've had only positive experiences with Carmel Elementary's and feel blessed again this year with my son's third-grade teacher and the wonderful Smoky Row. I am a licensed and practicing school counselor and have almost 20 years' experience working in public and private schools with developmental levels, preschool all the way through 12th grade. As we continue to raise the bar and possibly the time of the school day for our elementary students, I feel it critical to add at least 15 minutes more a day to the recess time. The FDA recommends children receive a minimum of 60 minutes exercise a day, and our own Indiana State recommends at least 30 minutes of physical play a day. Our elementary students currently only receive 15 minutes, plus a 50-minute PE class one time a week. As someone who is intimately involved in helping seniors with post-secondary education, I know the academic pressures they are under trying to get into American colleges and universities. I commend Carmel Clay Schools in our state for the high standards we're placing on our students so they can compete in today's world. That said, I still believe our young students need the additional recess time, and I would gladly sacrifice 15 minutes of my child's academic day to get it. If we truly are interested in the whole child and the academic achievement, we cannot afford to continue taking away free play. This school offering provides our children the most valuable opportunity to form positive peer relationships, healthy self-esteem building, and physical fitness. There are many studies that have shown that recess learning builds confidence, initiates problem-solving, and fosters creativity, not to mention the studies that show the classroom concentration and focus increases as well. So thank you. Please, 15 more minutes. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. And last, we have Dave Foster.
Good evening. Dave Foster, 13689 Thistlewood Drive West in Carmel. I'm here to briefly discuss some of the health issues associated with extending recess. Clearly, I think most of people in this room can appreciate that childhood obesity is a substantial problem. In terms of the short-term or the immediate consequences, our kids right now who are obese actually have risk factors for cardiovascular disease. We see kids now who have hypertension, who have high cholesterol. We see an increased incidence of type 2 diabetes in our obese children. Obesity in children is also associated with long-term psychosocial consequences. These kids tend to be stigmatized, they're more likely to be discriminated against, and they're more likely to be bullied. They tend to have low self-esteem, and this low self-esteem can actually progress into adulthood in these obese children. And finally, these kids are at a higher incidence of ultimately developing eating disorders as they progress into adolescence. Some of the long-term risks, really the key long-term risk with childhood obesity is that our obese kids tend to be the ones that are more likely to develop into obese adults. And I think everybody can appreciate the health risks associated with adult obesity. Just to drive this point home, recent data from the CDC would suggest that obesity has now surpassed smoking as the number-one cause of preventable mortality in the U.S. So obesity kills more people per year now than smoking does. In terms of the prevalence of childhood obesity, the CDC would estimate that around 17% of kids nationwide are obese. Indiana does not have a great track record for being a thin bunch, and actually, we're at the top in terms of rates of obesity in the nation. So if you think of the Carmel Clay School District, around 15,700 kids, 17% would mean that we're talking about at least 26 to 2,700 kids that are obese. Some of the other speakers have noted the need for physical activity. 60 minutes a day is recommended. The Institute of Medicine and their report on preventing childhood obesity actually recommends that 30 minutes of activity occur during the school day. So clearly, that 15 minutes that we currently have, even when we factor in weekly PE, we're not meeting the standard recommended by the Institute of Medicine. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you consider our idea.
Thank you very much. Next, on our agenda, we have consent. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next, we'll move on to action administrative contracts. Dr. Swenson.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I came before you previously with a recommendation that we have made for almost two decades about this time every year, and that is to extend the existing administrative contracts for one year so that our administrators, as designated, will have both next year and the following year as contracted service to our school corporation. We have had that discussion previously. I come before you seeking action with the recommendation that you approve the list of indicated administrators, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion from the board to approve recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Almost, Greg, maybe next time. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, community relations coordinator, salary schedule.
Yes, thank you very much. Our community relations coordinator, as previously discussed, and as you have before you, has really maximized the importance of the Carmel Clay Schools telling our own story, and I think that that story is briefly illustrated during this evening's meeting, extends throughout our community, throughout all of our children, and illustrates for one and all the fact that we are very focused on the well-being of our kids. I recommend, therefore, this evening, that our community relations coordinator position be placed on salary schedule M, as previously indicated, and would be happy to answer any questions you may have about this recommendation.
Motion to approve recommendation?
I move approval.
Thanks for jumping in there. Second.
Okay, I'll second.
Discussion. Mr. Phillips.
I think in addition to the many things that Dr. Swenson's listed to recommend this motion, I'd like to add that Mrs. Reynolds has been an important source of information for the board as well, helping to inform our decision-making. So she's really very important to what we do as a board.
Thank you, Greg. I think we'd all agree with that. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, enrollment at Orchard Park.
Thank you again, Madam President. As previously discussed, the very, very good news is our community is growing. The very, very good news is we have great schools. The also good news, one of those great schools is Orchard Park Elementary. On the flip side of the coin, Orchard Park Elementary is full enrollment-wise currently, and there are three new apartment complexes, as previously indicated, the board, that are under construction. And we are just convinced that at about 200 units each, that these three apartment complexes with 600 units total, and I knew that Mrs. Freed was calculating that to make sure I got that right, really will present great opportunities, because obviously, we welcome each and every child and each and every family, but our esteemed colleagues at Orchard Park simply, we're, we just don't have any more room. So as you know, my recommendation is that we redistrict those new neighborhoods, now they are apartment complexes, but they're really neighborhoods, to Woodbrook Elementary, which has more than ample space to satisfy enrollment, and will be most welcoming to the families and children if you support this recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Swenson. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Phillips. Discussion.
I would just like to say something. Redistricting is something that we look at periodically, obviously, and decisions taken many factors and weighed carefully. And, Dr. Swenson, I just want to thank you for looking ahead, because this is something that doesn't just happen every X amount of years, but you continually look at. So thank you.
You're very welcome. And I would just note for the board's continued good thinking process, that, again, the good news is our community continues to grow, and so that as the board looks forward to next year, and just thinking through enrollment, while it is sometimes referred to as the R-word, redistricting does need to continue to be considered. And just as one small illustration, today, Mr. Farron and Dr. Dillon and I, along with the cabinet, considered the planting process for, I believe it was 12 fairly large apartment units that are proposed, and, yes, you guessed it, for the Orchard Park attendance area. So they're simply, they're not built yet, and I'm sure there's, well, we know there's an approval process for this rather large undertaking, but with that, it's just an illustration, as well as the construction that's ongoing near Prairie Trace. We do have the, and I mean this sincerely, the happy problem of the fact that our quality grows our community, and so as the board looks forward, that, Mrs. Haggard, will continue to be part of the thinking that will need to occur.
Pam?
Yes, just one question. If it's not an elementary student, and it would be a middle school student, which school would they be attending?
Right. The, I think, and I'll turn to Dr. Dillon's great mind, I believe that they would end up at Carmel Middle. Oh, I'm sorry. I was thinking of Orchard Park. Right. So, yes, they would. I believe since we're not changing the, where the middle school attendance area is, then Creekside would be the school.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, elementary only. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion questions? Yes, Mr. Phillips?
I just wanted to add that I chance to bump into Mrs. Starr, and she's very enthusiastic about having new students. I think she's the principal at Woodbrook?
No, actually, she's in Mohawk Trails, but Mrs. Davis is...
I'm sure whoever does.
You are correct. Yes.
Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, all in favor of supporting the recommendation?
Aye.
Aye. Moving right along, we have Mr. McMichael with Bid Awards for the Fitness Center Equipment.
Thank you. The board received this report at the previous meeting, and so, our recommendation this evening is to award the bids for three categories of fitness equipment to Life Fitness. The details of that report are included in your packet of information.
Motion to approve recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Phillips, thank you. Discussion. Okay, moving right along. All in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Recommendation passes. Next, we have change orders for the Fitness Center. Mr. McMichael.
Okay. Yes, we have two, three, four, four change orders, two of which are add change orders and two deduct change orders. The total net add is twenty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and this is well within our contingency allowance that we have for this project.
Motion to approve recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Mr. Phillips. Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Mr. McMichael, the interlocal agreement, very large.
Thank you. This is an agreement for the, to have a, an emergency generator installed by the Hamilton County Emergency Management Authority at Carmel High School. This initiative is totally at the expense of the, of the emergency authority. I believe they received a grant for this purpose, but it definitely is a benefit to the community, and also a benefit specifically to Carmel High School, as it provides us with backup capabilities in the event of loss of power.
Thank you, Roger. Do I have a motion to approve recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Hackett. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Roger. And moving right along, policy. I know, surprise, surprise. We have Mrs. Pavlowski and Dr. Dillon.
And there it is, and it just appeared. How wonderful. Madam President, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present the second reading of Bylaw Zero One Six Seven Point Two. There were minor language changes made and updated based on the recommendations from the last school board meeting held on April seventh. And, basically, the executive summary of this bylaw on committees just reflects the changes in the open-door law, so that it clarifies that who appoints the committee does mandate whether or not that committee must abide by the open-door law.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the policy recommendation? Oh, thank you. Have a motion to approve the policy.
I'll move.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, policy, or actually, bylaw, Zero One Six Seven Point Two.
Okay, thank you. As I look this up here. Okay, bylaw Zero One Six Seven Point Two is regarding executive session. Once again, there were minor language changes made based on the recommendations from the school board meeting on April seventh. Basically, just adding all the provisions that are available under public law, twenty-four, to the reasons for executive session. And I will pull it up.
Motion to approve recommendation?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. And, Dr. Dillon?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Apparently, she doesn't want to continue, so. Policy Twenty-Two Sixty, nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity. This was brought to us as a revised policy proposed initially by NEOLA. It's been reviewed extensively by our policy committee, and this policy was revised to include language regarding sexual orientation and transgender identity.
Thank you. May I get a motion to approve the recommendation for policy Twenty-Two Sixty?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Tricia. Discussion. Greg?
Dr. Dillon, I have a question about the protected classes, which include race, color, national origin, sex, including sexual orientation. Do I understand that sexual orientation includes gender identity?
It is our understanding, based upon advice from our attorneys, that category of, protected category of sex includes sexual orientation.
Sex is sexual identity.
Sex is sexual identity. Thank you. As you can tell, without a scorecard, it's hard to keep this straight.
I'm sorry?
Mrs. Spannberg, could you help us out with that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Please.
Amy Matthews from council, throwback, and sex is considered, sexual identity is covered under sex, the term sex. Sexual identity is not, so that's why it is listed separately?
Sexual orientation.
I'm sorry, thank you. Sexual orientation.
As I said, it's difficult without a scorecard to keep this straight.
I find myself tripping over these terms, too.
Okay, sex?
Transgender identity is included under the term sex. Sexual orientation is not, so that's why it is included in parentheses, in addition to...
I think I'm clear. So, even though the words on the page do not specifically state gender identity, we are to understand from legal counsel that sex as a category does include gender identity. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a broader category that has several subcategories under it, according to our legal counsel.
Yes.
Would legal counsel suggest we not include the words gender identity, even though it's understood to be a part of sex?
That is correct. It was, it was suggested that it was not necessary to include because it was included.
Well, I can understand that it might not be necessary, but I guess my question is different than that, too. My question is, is there a reason not to include it specifically?
I'm afraid that without advice from legal counsel, I would be unable to answer that question.
Is legal counsel available to answer that question?
No, Amy Matthews is not with us this evening.
I guess I'd like an answer from legal counsel.
We already had it. You got it. You got any?
I didn't hear it.
We, we got an email from them. That's why we did not include sexual identity in the terminology for this policy, because by law, it is already included in the term sex, but sexual orientation is not listed as part of that term. So, we added sexual orientation so that it is in addition to all of the things listed under sex.
Imagine discussing sex in front of all these people. I, I don't think we have any, any confusion as to the intent. I believe we're all intending to, to protect people that would describe their gender identity as something different than other people's gender identity. You know, we're only talking about language here, and if there's no objection to being explicit about what we're intending to say, then I would like to say the words, even though they're implied explicitly.
So, what words are you thinking, gender identity or transgendered status? Because both are synonymous?
Say it again?
I said, what words are you considering, gender identity or transgendered status?
I think a reasonable addition would be, in a parenthetical phrase where it says, including sexual orientation, to insert the phrase and gender identity.
Greg, do you have a motion? Do you have a motion to amend what we have?
I didn't hear you. Say it again.
Do you have a motion to amend what is currently stated in the policy?
Do you have a motion on the floor already?
We are discussing this.
Yes, we have a motion on the floor. We are discussing this.
So then, the question is, do I have an amendment?
Forty-one or Twenty-Two Sixty.
We have a motion already on the floor?
We do. We're discussing Twenty-Two Sixty.
Motion to approve this.
Yeah.
As stated, do you have a motion to amend it?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to amend, as I suggested, that we insert the explicit language in the parenthetical phrase, including sexual orientation, to include the words and gender identity, so that we have no mistake about the intention of this board to say explicitly what we intend to say. I hope someone will...
Do I have a motion to second? Do I have a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
Okay, discussion.
I don't have the email in front of me from council, but...
I do.
Maybe the policy committee can help with this, but I believe council's suggestion was to not pull it out because of, of how the issue is handled legally, and their suggested words, to handle it from the legal point of view. So, council's suggestion was to not pull it out. But not that it wasn't included, it still is included in that phrase. That's how I interpret it.
Any other discussion?
I thought I read in that same email, too, from the council, that part of the intent was to, to, since it's already restated in the law, to not have all of our policies include restatements of the law, as, as been what we've kind of followed as we've gone through the procedure, so that there was really no need to put it in there as extra verbiage.
Any other discussion?
And the reason including sexual orientation is in there is because it's not in the law. So, it was added because we want to specifically make sure that that is added to everything that's already in the other category.
I'm very happy with, with that. I think it's entirely appropriate that we should be explicit and clear with respect to sexual orientation. And I understand that, in council's advice, is that the law governing sex includes gender identity. I, what I'm not understanding is the reluctance to explicitly state what our actual intention is.
Because if you say including that, transgender identity, then you're, we are stating that it's not included in sex, in part, in that part of the law in the first place. So, what we're saying is, there's the law, sexual orientation is not in the law, so we are adding it as an extra piece so that we can also help people who are being discriminated against because of sexual orientation. But the other piece is already included in the law, so...
Can I tie in?
Sure.
What Amy Matthews had sent, or what council sent?
I'm sorry, what council had sent, specifically stated in the email that I had sent, gender identity or transgendered status is an emerging area of discrimination law. The U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission and the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights, along with most courts, address discrimination based on gender identity under Title VII as discrimination based on sex. Therefore, individuals could file complaints under existing policies and procedures for Title VII sex discrimination, and it would not be necessary to add it to policies. That was the information that we based our policy structure on. We being the policy committee.
Well, it's already covered. It doesn't have necessary liability. It's already covered under sex. But she did say... To add it under policy may create liability that the school otherwise wouldn't have under the current law.
That's, that's sexual orientation.
Okay.
Because sexual orientation is not covered under sex, so adding it does create liability. But, but in Carmel Clay Schools, we don't discriminate on anything, so it really doesn't create any problem adding it to the policy. So, in fact, we want people to understand that we don't discriminate based on anything. But since sexual identity is covered under sex, we did not add it as an additional, additional language. Do we have any other discussion?
I want to apologize for, you know, dragging this out so far, but, you know, this is such an important thing to so many people, and our policies need to be clear. And by clear, I mean that an ordinary person reading it straight through should, you know, understand what it is that we intend. And I don't believe that the ordinary person, the average person, would, would look at the language there and understand that persons who have gender identity concerns would be safe from discrimination by the district. I understand perfectly, I think, that the law, by protecting gender or sex, includes gender identity, but I don't believe the average person reading that policy would come to that same conclusion. So, if there's any way that we, you know, together can think of some language that doesn't do any damage to our legal standing, that, that I would, I would hope that we could insert a phrase to, to make it clear to the average person. That's all.
Any other discussion? Okay, then let's call for a vote on the amended, adding gender identity, let's check it this right, adding gender identity to policy Twenty-Two Sixty. So, we are just voting on adding that language to Twenty-Two Sixty. All in favor?
I think you're calling for approval of the amendment.
I'm calling for approval of the amendment.
Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Not done that before? Just call each name?
Yes.
Greg Phillips?
I vote aye.
Mrs. Hackett?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So, amendment fails, so we still have the motion on the table to approve Twenty-Two Sixty as is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, we have policy Forty-One Sixty Two.
Thank you very much. Policy Forty-One Sixty Two, drug and alcohol testing of commercial driver's license, CDL license holders. You will notice in red on the screen, we have added language to the title that does not reflect in your board notes. The software would not allow us to change the title in mid-approval process, once this policy, if this policy is approved this evening. Tomorrow, that new title will reflect. This was a revised policy for Carmel Clay Schools, proposed by NEOLA. It's been reviewed and revised by Mr. Farron and our policy committee. Executive summary, briefly, the revisions to this policy address the issues raised by the Indiana State Police Bus Inspectors. Federal guidance on this law notes that the employer is responsible for ensuring that each driver signs a statement certifying that he or she has received the copies of the materials indicated in section three eight two point six oh one of the federal law.
Okay, motion to approve, policy Forty-One Sixty Two.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, Fifty-Four Sixty Two.
Thank you. Policy Fifty-Four Sixty Two, originally titled Retaking a Class. It was recommended and during policy... during Policy Committee that we modify the title. Again, you'll notice in red, the new title that we're proposing is Retaking a Class by High School Students, to make sure that we clarify that this is a high school only. Once again, the software would not allow a title change in mid-approval process. If passed, it will reflect the new title tomorrow. This will be a new policy for Carmel Clay schools, was brought to us by Neola. It has been reviewed, and it is being recommended by the Policy Committee. Neola provided this policy due to numerous client requests on a policy about retaking a class. The proposed revisions have been reviewed by Dr. Dudley, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and by the Policy Committee.
Motion to approve recommendation for policy fifty-four sixty-two.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say thank you, as reviewing this, I noted our conversation last time of the high school students, so I like this title change a lot.
Thank you. We weren't sure where to insert it. It was kind of a big question at the end. We just changed the title and it made it much easier.
Thanks.
So with that, any other discussion? All in favor, policy fifty-four sixty-two?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next, policy fifty-four sixty-three.
Policy fifty-four sixty-three, credits and placement from non-accredited schools. This is a revised policy for Carmel Clay schools. Revisions were proposed by Neola. It has been reviewed and recommended by the Policy Committee. Executive summary is that in a publication released in March of two thousand and eleven titled Requirements and Guidelines for Indiana High School Transcripts, the DOE is requiring a grade to accompany each course for which a student is given credit. The proposed revisions have been reviewed by Dr. Dudley and by our Policy Committee.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dillon.
Thank you.
May I get a motion to approve the recommendation for fifty-four sixty-three?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last but not least, policy seventy-five forty-two.
And our final policy for a second reading tonight, seventy-five forty-two, access to corporation technology resources from personal communication devices. A new policy for Carmel Clay schools, proposed by Neola, has been reviewed and is being recommended tonight by the Policy Committee. Executive summary, this policy is provided due to the significant increase in the number of and complexity of network technology resources that are utilized in most corporations, including public access, better known as guest access, and private networks, printers, et cetera. This policy has been reviewed by Mrs. Cloud, our Director of Information Services, and the Policy Committee. And I hope that all of you receive the comparison that Mrs. Cloud put together that was asked about at our last meeting.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
May I get a motion to approve the recommendation?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we turn to Dr. Dillon.
Thank you. It's just a never-ending process. Bringing to you tonight several policies for a first reading. First of all, bringing to you a group of policies, and this policy has been with us for a very long time in discussion process. Originally started as a very, very large document, which our Policy Committee tried very hard to condense, and then sent to our attorneys for our review of our handiwork, which we were very proud of, only to find out from our attorney that we had left out many, many, many vital pieces to this policy that, in her legal advice, we should include. So you will notice there are four numbers. However, they are exactly the same policy. The reason there are four numbers here is, once again, the one thousand categories would be administrative policies, the three thousand categories would be our certified staff policies, the forty-four thousand categories would be our non-certified staff category policies, and the five thousands would be our student policy. This is, in some cases, a new policy for us, but mostly it's a revised policy for Carmel Clay schools, originally brought to us in two thousand and ten, I believe, by Neola. It has been reviewed extensively by our legal counsel and our Policy Committee, and we did take this to district discussion on April sixteenth, and the Policy Committee has reviewed suggestions made by our association, and they were considered in revising this policy. Neola first recommended changes to these policies in the spring of two thousand and ten. Since then, considerable discussion about the necessity of these policy revisions and the overwhelming amount of legal verbiage that was originally proposed by Neola has taken place. Changes were recommended to these policies in response to reviews by the Office of Civil Rights and client districts around the area. The proposed revisions have been extensively reviewed, once again, by the Policy Committee and our legal counsel, and these revisions are strongly recommended tonight.
Okay, for sake of discussion, we will discuss all four of these as a grouping. Thank you very much, Dr. Dillon.
You're welcome.
So discussion on the nondiscrimination anti-harassment statement policy. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mrs. Spendenberg. I don't have any quarrel with the substance, the content of what we got here. I think it's a good set of policies and should be adopted. And I just want to note that I appreciate the attempts of the committee to slim down the size of these things. Legal concerns are important. But I can't help but note that these four policies taken together are sixty-seven percent larger than the U.S. Constitution, which is the basis for every law in the country. So I hope that as we press forward, we can look for opportunities to do that cutting without, of course, doing damage to our legal concerns. I had a couple of other concerns. We've talked before, when Mr. Klein was a part of our group, we talked about slimming things down, and we talked about not duplicating policies, but I guess that's an issue for another time. I'll admit to some confusion that this one set of policies seems to address both nondiscrimination and anti-harassment. So I'm not sure why it's necessary to combine those two, and perhaps the committee can help me to understand, why are we addressing two broad topics in one set of policies here?
Pam, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. It was the anti-harassment statement, but we can't necessarily state an anti-harassment if we don't say, if we don't state what it is that you can be harassed about. So nondiscrimination is included in there for that reason alone. We appreciate that it is slightly repetitious, and it is quite long. The reason it's quite long, although it is much shorter than what Neola had presented to us, is because of the seriousness of both of these situations. And if there is an issue, there have been districts that have been cited for not having all the information easily accessible to the individual who's been harassed. And to avoid that, counsel took our three paragraph suggestion and suggested this. It included, and there are specific parameters or specific items that need to be included in the policy itself, based on legal citations. And some of those included, excuse me, some of those included are the specific individual that you need to contact and the procedures. Even though we consider those administrative guidelines, it really needs to be in policy because of past litigation.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add, Dr. Dillon?
You did an excellent job with that, and I might say that even though while these are still extremely long policies, they are considerably shorter than the original Neola version. And I do believe that the title change was a suggestion by our attorney, because the policy, while it was originally presented as an anti-harassment policy, really was also a nondiscrimination policy for Carmel Clay schools. And so.
I do have one follow-on question.
Please.
When I see a policy putting forward phone numbers of specified individuals, that gives me just a little bit of pause, because that would seem to suggest that any time someone changes their phone number, the board's going to have to approve a revision to its policy. Is that the case?
I would say to you that we also questioned that, and once again, our attorney said that for the ease of a person who feels like they have been discriminated against, to have the information accessible to them easily so that they could file their complaint. We must not just have titles of people, but we need to have names, phone numbers, email addresses, and mailing addresses. In the future, if those positions change, I would view those as clerical changes, and you have given me permission in the past to make those clerical changes to your policies without going through this sometimes laborious process.
Just one last question to follow on that, Dr. Dillon. Can I assume that the phone numbers and all the other details will be replicated in administrative guidelines?
At this point, this policy is so all-inclusive that I believe we'll have to look at the administrative guidelines after this is passed, but it may be quite possible that we won't have administrative guidelines. We may have some forms that we'll generate, but I can't off the top of my head tell you what the guidelines may or may not look like at this point. We typically will create the guidelines after you create the policies.
Good discussion. Do you have any other questions, Greg? Any other questions? Anybody from the board? Other discussion? Okay. Then, moving right along.
Thank you very much. Our next set of policies that we bring forward for a first reading this evening would be, again, three sets of policies, all duplicates. I've brought to you just for tonight's reading, thirty-one twenty point oh two. This would also include eleven twenty point oh two and forty-one twenty point oh two. Again, they're all identical. This is our nepotism and relatives reporting to relatives policy. This is a revised policy for Carmel Clay schools. This policy revision was proposed to us by a school board member. It has been reviewed by our legal counsel and is being recommended this evening by our Policy Committee. It was taken to district discussion on April sixteenth, and we have incorporated suggestions to improve this policy that were made by our friends in the association. Carmel Clay schools adopted our original nepotism policy on December sixteenth, nineteen ninety-one. Since then, we have revised the policy twice, on April fourth of two thousand and four, and on October twenty-seventh of two thousand and eight. It was recommended by a school board member that we review our current policy. This recommended revision is based upon current Neola policy that has been modified by the Policy Committee and, once again, reviewed by our legal counsel.
Thank you, Dr. Dillon.
You're welcome.
Discussion? Well, we have a discussion item, because there's an oversight that we caught. Pam?
Yes, we had changed chain of command in language that we had discussed last week.
That apparently, that gave some source of confusion, and there is one chain of command in the first sentence.
No, there were two cited.
Right, but the one in the first sentence, we missed.
No, what? That was the one we changed.
We will go back to our notes. We have Policy Committee tomorrow.
We sure do, nine a.m.
We will reflect on that. I thought for certain that we had made those changes online, but...
Well, we did make the change down in one, two, three.
Oh, so we have, we just haven't caught all of the chain of commands.
We had an oversight, yes.
Thank you very much.
No, we did change that one.
Okay. So we will send that.
Okay.
For the sake of everyone else, we are referring to the terminology chain of command that is mentioned multiple times in the policy, was recommended to us, that that was maybe a misleading term, and we've come up with a different terminology, and we will make sure that that's reflected after tomorrow's committee meeting. Thank you.
Yes. Other discussion questions? Okay, next.
Policy seventy-four thirty-four, use of tobacco on school grounds and buses. This is a revised policy for Carmel Clay schools, was proposed to us by Neola. It has been reviewed and is being recommended tonight by the Policy Committee, and it was discussed with our association friends on April sixteenth of this year. And we have incorporated suggestions that were made by the association to improve this policy that we're proposing tonight. Public Law one forty-one, House Act, House Enrolled Act eleven forty-nine, effective July first of two thousand and twelve, prohibits smoking in public places and on school buses. The revisions to this policy reflect that law. The ease of policy revisions reflect the current state of the law and should be adopted by us to have accurate policies. They have been reviewed, this has been reviewed by the Policy Committee.
Discussion? Yes.
So does this cover the loading dock? Okay.
Any other discussion questions?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, well, I think that sums it up. Thank you very much, Dr. Dillon.
Thank you all very much.
We look forward to seeing you in the morning.
I eagerly await continued policy discussion.
Next, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. One very brief item. I'm pleased to report that Senate Bill one eighty-nine has been successfully encountered by the conference committee process, and the version of the bill created by the Senate, and then the different version of the bill created by the House are, I believe, going to end somewhere in the middle, which is a conference committee's purpose. And I'm certainly very optimistic that we should have a new law in place to create performance-qualified school district status for the governor's signature, and then for promulgation on July first of this year, which will mean that the Carmel Clay schools and others so designated will be eligible to implement and look forward to programming and other activities that will take us and those designated districts to that next level of academic achievement. So while I do not have a draft presently, and while there will be, within the law, reflected the give and take that you would expect, I believe that it will emerge as, or we anticipate it will be, a law that we certainly, as a school corporation, can live with, and, most importantly, one that will benefit the lives of our students. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Swenson. We have board reports, and I know Mrs. Knolls has a report, so please go.
Yes, I do. I would like to report that Greg and I attended the National School Boards Association Conference from April thirteenth through the fifteenth in San Diego, California. I attended some very informative, up-to-date conferences and returned with a lot of useful information for our corporation. Some of the titles of the sessions I attended were Education Content for the iPad, it was presented by Apple, The Board and Its Superintendent: Developing and Maintaining an Effective Relationship. That was presented by the Illinois Association of School Boards, and they did an excellent job, and it was very worthwhile. And Don't Let Rotten Apples Spoil the Bunch: Best Practices for Responding to Employee Misconduct. And that was presented by our very own Andrew Manna and Seamus Boyce of our school council firm. I will be sharing all of the information from the conference with the board at a later date.
Thank you, Pam. I know we're very excited to learn what you have learned. So other board reports? Greg?
Just to tag on to that, I too greatly appreciate the opportunity to attend the National School Board Association Convention. Very stimulating. It's always a great shot in the arm. Tremendous stimulation about technology, just amazing the things that schools are undertaking to assist instruction with technology. Lot of good information about relationships, building relationships among board members, with superintendents, with teachers. I highly recommend the experience to every last one of our board members and hope that they have that opportunity in the future.
Oh, speaking of.
Yes?
The future is in New Orleans, first week of April next year.
During spring break. During spring break. Other, Mrs. Hackett?
I do have a report. In January, the board pursued a traditional yet compressed superintendent search process and entered into a partnership with the search firm BWP and Associates. This process included, but was not limited to, guidance embedding by our consultants, board discussion, and interviewing, and stakeholder input in development of a leadership profile outlining the desired qualities of the next superintendent of Carmel Clay schools. Through this process, the board has met a number of talented and experienced professionals, and we are grateful for the time that they spent with us. At this time, the board believes that our search to find the best superintendent of Carmel Clay schools must continue. The board is now carefully planning our next steps, and as always, will continue to keep everyone posted of progress. Also at this time, I'd like to thank our community for their support and patience while the board makes this very important decision for our schools. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. Any other board information to share?
My only information to share this evening is that in May, we only hold one school board meeting, which is the third Monday of the month. So if you're here the second Monday, we won't be here. So, on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you all for joining us this evening and supporting our students. Meeting adjourned.